I call this meeting to order. Welcome to this November thirteenth study session of the Auburn City Council. If you have a cellphone, I ask that you would place it on silent. I call this meeting to order and I'd ask Carp Domingo to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Barnes, Reed.
Here.
Brown, Lawler.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Brown.
Here. Just before we begin public comments, I'll just make note that Mayor Protem Brown and Councilmember Barnes let us know that they would not be in attendance tonight. So, they did let us know that. Are there any public comments this evening on the agenda items? We ask that you speak for no more than three minutes and observe proper decorum. Are there any public comments this evening? Seeing none, we will proceed to the budget discussion and you have the floor.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Tom.
Think we can move through these fairly quickly. Not a whole lot in these funds that have changed from prior years. And like before, if anybody's got questions, feel free to stop me at any time. First one, and I assume I will do them in the order, I guess, of the packet. First one, we have is Recreation Fund 208. Only change, notable change I'll point out there is on the appropriations roughly halfway down on salaries and wage. If you look across to the right-hand, two right-hand columns, there's some in the full-time this year. In the past, everybody in that department's been paid out of the part-time wage line item right below it. Going forward, we're going to try something a little different. We're going to try to split it out where we'll have Larry as the Director of Recreation be the full-time person being paid out of the full-time line item. That's why that there's, you know, obviously some increase in that line. And then when you look below it in the part-time, that has been dropped proportionately. So, no other change, I guess, like I said, in far as total expenses. We had just had to juggle a few things around to kind of make that happen. But bottom line for them, if you flip to the next page, it's going to be a little tight in eighteen. But again, it's something we're trying. We're hoping, you know, Recreation's one of those things where you never really know what they're going to get with grants and/or donations, whatever. So, in the years past, I know they've had some sizable grants and some donations from some of the businesses here in town. So, you know, we'll give a shot this way and hopefully it'll work out. See where we go from there. Any questions on that?
Yes. Councilmember Lawler, Councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. How many part-time recreational people do we have?
You would ask that, wouldn't you? I know they're seasonal.
Oh.
And I know, I mean, I know at different times of the year, the number changes a lot depending on what they have going on. And I don't know, maybe Dr. Mitchell could answer better than I could on that.
Yes, there's two permanent part-time and the rest we would call seasonal or contractual given.
Yeah, and I think that number varies a lot depending on the program, you know, on whether the...
I know they have a couple, three lifeguards that they have on staff. If it was open, they add some part-time staff and they do basketball camps or football camps or whatever else they do. So, yeah.
Right.
Peapods and keep them for kids that aren't...
Other questions?
Councilmember French.
Thank you. So, I don't see, maybe I'm just not seeing it, in terms of revenues expected, are we holding them to some local grants? You've got them, you've got that line item as zero?
Correct. If we're...
Rather than expecting Larry to write grants, we're just going to, he's going to write them. If we get them, that's great. But if not, we're not...
Yeah, and I don't know if expect is the right word. I guess when we do the budget, we try to look at if we know of something, we will reflect it. If it's unknown or uncertain at the time, we'll hold off, being conservative, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you. Did I hear you correctly and understand that the director went from part-time to full-time?
Correct.
And but no increase in money from the budget because we're expecting grants to supplement? Or did I misunderstand?
No, yeah, two different things. I mean, the grant thing, we didn't put anything in for grants. What we did on moving him from part-time to full-time is we reduced the part-time line item significantly and now are reflecting that in the full-time line item. And then down through the budget, there were a few other things we had to change, like life insurance, you know. Being a full-time person, you get life insurance. That's like two-hundred-and-twenty-some dollars a year. So, it's some real minor things that would be a benefit to a full-time person that he would receive. And then to get the budget to bounce, we just had to cut a few other things back a little bit in some of the other areas. Like, you know, some of the vehicle expenses or some of the other things, tried to trim it down a little bit, hoping that he can stay within that.
So then, so then, was he, was the director doing full-time work at a part-time salary? Or do we expect the duties to increase?
I can't, I don't know his hours that he worked before. I don't really, again, maybe Dr. Mitchell will want to step in on that.
Quite frankly, he's worked more than his allocated number of hours. So, we didn't want to be in violation of fair labor laws. So, it made sense to just make the position full-time so that he had greater flexibility in terms of his schedule, which often would easily exceed twenty-nine hours on average. So, the total cost in terms of compensation is not significantly increased, but the category in which he is from part-time to full-time seem to make the most sense. Thank you. Thank you.
Any others? Okay. Moving on to ABA Fund 275. And this is one, because there's a lot of departments within ABA, I printed it out to where it'll be a different department on each line or each page. So, it looks a little long, but really, like I said, there's simply just because of all the different departments. So, the very first page just shows the revenue. And the problem that ABA has faced, been faced with for several years really, is there just isn't much revenue coming in to that fund. As you can see, you know, four thousand dollars roughly in total revenue, which mostly is just interest income or whatever. So, there just isn't much. It's not like some of these funds that have millage rates or anything like that coming in. So, that's, that's the issue ABA struggled with. Flipping over, the first, they had Department 260, and I can't remember if I pointed this out before. In our old software, you could use the same department number in different funds with different titles. And the new software, that created problems. So, when we did the conversion, this is one where Department 260 was in general fund. It was the finance department in ABA. It's just their general appropriations department. So, we kind of had to rename it so it made sense. So, it says Finance Department and/or ABA General. So, it just kind of depends on what fund you're looking at as to what department it's describing, if that makes sense. It's just a software capability or in this case of inability to handle the way we had it set up before. So, so in any way, what this is, is the ABA's general appropriations department. There's not a lot that goes on there other than the admin fees that they pay to the general fund for us doing the administrative work for them. So, flipping that one over, the next department, 264, that is the EDC building property. The big change there, of course, is in eighteen with the anticipation of the tenants leaving. There is no rent income. Obviously, the, if they sell the building, there would be their income from the sale of the building, but we don't know at this point how much or when or anything like that. So, the only thing that we are anticipating is until it sells, they'll probably have to continue to pay some of the utilities. I'm sure we'll have to keep the heat on it to make it show better for realtors and stuff. I'm sure they'll want electricity on and stuff like that. So, moving on to the next department. Department 265, this is another one where in general fund, it was Municipal Building Department, but in ABA, it's the 201 North Clinton property. And under the new agreement with AG Edwards, they pay us a dollar a month in rent. And then they pay a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a month in lieu of taxes, property taxes. So, that's the two revenue items up there. But they, in turn, pay for all the expenses. So, there are no expenses really to speak of other than the insurance on the building. And moving on to the next department. Department 270 is the Gale Street property. The agreement with Public Safety is that in lieu of paying the rent every year, which was seven thousand dollars, Public Safety basically just took over the expenses on the building. So, going forward, there should be no expenses to ABA on that property unless there was something, I guess, unique that came up that they had to work out between them. But as far as just your ongoing day-to-day stuff, no expenses anticipated. So, that kind of zeros out. Moving on to the next department. Department 271 is the Fire Ambulance Building. And that reflects in the rent revenue that we receive from Public Safety and from the ambulance, Jackson County Ambulance Services. There is also that odd little clause in the agreement where the ambulance has agreed to pay, they pay their rent, and then they, we're supposed to look at the actual operating costs or expense of the building each year. And if they exceed, if they paid in more than what the actual costs are, we reimburse them a little bit. And in the earlier years, when the building's new, we'd anticipate that we would be paying them some back every year because we're not putting a lot of maintenance into the building right now. Some year down the road, if the maintenance building gets older and we start, you know, having more maintenance, they have agreed that they would pay more if necessary in rent to help cover those repairs. So, it's one of those things, you never know how much it's really going to be until the end of the year. But that's what that negative number is, or that rent adjustment is. We don't anticipate any different expenses on that one. So, questions on that?
Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you. Tom, being that you've only been on council eleven months, and I'm learning here. And perhaps we've been dealing with the Huron Valley ambulance for some time. I don't understand. Can you give me a quick little why, how, what? Because I know we do Jackson ambulance service?
Well, I said, yeah, Huron Valley's, I think, I don't know, I call it Jackson, but it's Huron Valley. Yeah, that's why, I don't know. It's one and the same again. I don't know if they, I think that one time, they might have called themselves that anyway. But it's, yeah, Huron Valley's who the agreement's with. And they pay monthly rent for, like I said, being in the building. And it's split, of course, by the one bay they have. So, it's kind of prorated. And their rent not only helps, I mean, they're not only paying rent to help with the expenses and stuff of the building, but then they also pay us another annual payment that goes into the debt service fund that helps pay for their portion of the bond debt for the bonds when we purchased the building. So, so they're actually paying more than what's reflected here. This is just their rent for the building. Then they pay another piece for the debt service on the building, if that makes sense.
It does. And I see that there is no cost to us. And I just wanted an explanation as to...
Okay.
...to understand.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. The next department, 273. Oops, I'm right. Trying to remember what this one is. Oh, Food Hub. Yep, Food Hub, there we go. Relatively, or somewhat of a new one. But right now, there really isn't any revenue from the Food Hub building. My understanding is the goal would be when the apartments are rented out upstairs, then ABA would get that rental income. But for the Food Hub being in the building, there's not, they're not charging, I guess, at this point. And then likewise, the only expenses, Food Hub's picking up almost all the expenses with the exception of there are some meters. My understanding is there's a couple of different electrical meters. There's electrical meters for the Food Hub equipment that is paid by the Food Hub. But then there are some meters in place in case they do or for when they do rent out the apartments. And those have the minimal, minimum monthly charges. So, the ABA is paying those meter rental, meter fees. Questions on that? Yep.
Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you. So, the Food Hub doesn't pay rent. They just take care of the utilities? Is that why they're not being charged?
Correct. Yep. They're paying all the expenses for the building right now. Others? Oops, that's it. So, I got to go to the bottom. So, actually, without the rent from the EDC building being reflected in there, we're actually showing they could actually lose a little bit. Their appropriations may exceed the revenues in eighteen. But again, that has nothing in there for the sale of the building, you know, any income that would come in from that. So, either way, they do have the fund balance to handle that. Like we're showing them being thirty-eight-hundred short. And they obviously, they have a hundred-and-ten-thousand, or actually, they have a hundred-and-fourteen thousand on fund balance. So, they do have the fund balance to cover that if they, if there is a little bit of a shortfall. But obviously, ABA, excuse me, ABA is aware of the issues they have, of the challenges with no revenue coming in. I think it's, you know, what we've seen them trying to sell off some of these properties to put themselves in a position where they don't have these expenses each year. So, questions on ABA?
Mike, I do want to add that the 309 North Superior Street Building, also known as the EDC Building, will be on the market shortly. So, hopefully those proceeds will help them even with the redevelopment of the Food Hub building apartment.
So, is EDC moving?
Yes.
Okay. The next page is Maple Grove. And Maple Grove does fairly well out there. They are usually in a pretty good position each year. And again, a lot of the rental rates are established by HUD. But at any rate, as you can see from, you know, we're looking at approximately four-hundred-and-forty-three thousand in rental income, appropriations of three-hundred-and-fifty. So, you know, having a, ending the year with roughly thirty-one thousand left over after they transfer out sixty-five, or just under sixty-five thousand to go towards the bond payment for renovations and stuff that were done on the property. And their fund balance, as you can see on the bottom, is very strong, five-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand dollars. So, like I said, they do pretty well out there. There are not a lot, I guess, to cover on that one. So, questions on Maple Grove? Flipping over to Fund 202, Local Streets. Fortunately, the state has decided in the last few years to increase the amount that they...
You mean ma, you mean major streets?
Yep, sure. I'm sorry.
You mean major streets?
Ah, yes. Yes, I'm sorry. You're right, major streets. Not too many years ago, I remember right before Kevin Markovich left, we were looking at these funds and we were pretty concerned. The money that we received from Act 51 was not sufficient to cover our operating costs. And the fund balances were dropping pretty quick. But fortunately, the last few years, the state has changed that. And they've increased what they are paying out to local municipalities now. And it's made a huge difference. It's turned these funds around. So, thankfully, like I said, our revenues are up and they continue to increase. There's a website that we go to. And the state tells us, based on your miles, roads, and population, all that, they tell you what they anticipate they're going to pay you. Each year, it's going up. Like I said, it's making a big difference in these funds. There isn't a whole lot of change in expenses. As a matter of fact, I can't really think of any of it. As you go down through these next couple pages, there's nothing really changes in any of the funds for expenses. But if you go down to where it says page three of three, we anticipate ending next year with about forty-three thousand left over. And that's after transferring, transferring about a hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand into Local Street. So, like I said, it's a fairly healthy fund. The increased Act 51 money's turned these funds around, it's helped tremendously. Questions on...
Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you. Tom, have we ID'd possible local streets for repair for next year's project?
I, and Dr. Mitchell can feel free to jump in if she'd like. But my understanding, the last conversation I had with Jim, is he had worked with our engineering firm that we use regularly on the streets. And they'd put together a plan, looking at, trying to spread it around throughout the different areas of town. And they'd put together a plan of streets they would like to see done based on, you know, what they feel the cost might be and stuff. I don't know that they picked any at this point in time, but I think they've got ideas or, you know, some goals of what they would like to see done. But I don't think at this point in time, they've picked any. And I don't know if you'd like to add any?
No. And normally, we will bring back the proposed streets to council for their approval along with the RFP or contract for getting those repairs done.
And a couple of things I'll point out, too, is most of the street repairs in town are paid for out of the, a fund we'll get to a little further down for, it's a Street Improvement Fund. Most of the stuff in the ma, major street in the next one, Fund 203, Local Street, are more for the maintenance of the streets. But having said that, Act 51, like I said, number one, in the past, there was not any money left over in these funds. They weren't even able to sustain themselves, let alone have extra money left over. We're actually at a point now where there is enough of this money left over to help on some of the repairs and stuff from these funds. And there's also a requirement that part of the Act 51, you have to spend a cer, a small percentage on non-motorized, on sidewalks, trails, whatever. So, with the bike trails and stuff, that's given us an opportunity to meet that requirement for the state to be able, and fortunately, again, these funds have the strength, or, you know, they're healthy enough now to be able to send some money that way. But to get to your question, as we get down, a couple more funds down, there's a Street Improvement Fund. And that's where we have the, that's where the revenue comes in for the street millage. And that's the money that generally is used to pay for the street repairs. So, this, this fund is more traditionally more for the maintenance of plowing and potholes and, you know, all that kind of stuff. So... Other questions on that fund? Next one is the Local Street, which I tried to get to a little bit earlier, earlier. I tried to hurry through. Yep. Local Street works the same as Major Street. The only difference, of course, is MDOT, you, they categorize your streets as to how much they're used. And they're, they pay less when they pay the Act 51 money. A bigger percentage of it goes to the Major Street, smaller percentage of it to the Local Streets. Fortunately, they do allow you to transfer some of that money back and forth. You have some limits on what you can transfer. But by staying within those limits, we're still able to transfer some of that from the Major Street over to the Local Street. And again, the increase in Act 51 money has helped substantially even for the Local Street Fund. There were years when this was in the red year after year. And now we're finally getting it back to where it's in the black again. So...
Excuse me, Councilmember French.
So, account number seven, five-seven-nine, is that 224 not include the 193 that we're getting from the Mega Street transfer over?
That is correct. The 193 would be on the next page, or 190, I guess.
So, it's considered the, oh, yeah, there it is on the second page.
Actually, that, I probably misspoke. The 193 that's being transferred out, 190 of it is going to Local. Three thousand of it, I forgot, goes to a debt service fund for the building.
Right.
So, yeah, down on the second page, there's the 190 coming in.
Okay, there it is. Okay. So, that means we have almost fourteen thousand dollars this year for Local Streets.
Yes.
Okay, what we had last, that's better. Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you show me on here where deduction for the street, the two streets that we did, local streets that we did this year, Ford and...
Turpene, I believe. I, I, yes, I know. I will show you that. And again, it's, it's the next one after this one. So, yep, definitely can. Because again, the Local Street, this 203, more or less is the maintenance of, you know, the plowing, the potholes and all that kind of stuff, signs and all that. Jumping over, if there are no more questions, I guess we jumped, we did, on page two of, of Fund 203, from Councilmember French mentioned the 190,000 coming in. You see that, just above that gray bar there, that shows where that transfer from the Local Street is coming into the, I'm sorry, the Major Street is coming into the Local Street. So, again, we anticipate ending with, ending the year in eighteen with about sixteen thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-seven to the good in Local Streets. And again, that's helping build that fund balance up. You can see, if you go back to sixteen, early on, fund balance was under a hundred thousand. And if you go back a few years prior to that, it was much lower. And like I said, it's, it's coming back. So, we're getting that fund balance built back up. So, any questions on any more Local Street? If not, we'll jump to the next one, Fund 450. This is the one I think you were asking about, where everybody's interest is, because this is one where the street millage money comes into from the tax bills. We're estimating somewhere around two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand to come in, in that ballpark, from the three mills that we levy. The one thing that's a little odd, and I was thinking about this a little bit earlier tonight, in the past, we've always tried to, when we identified... in the past, we've always tried to, when we identify the streets we want to repair or, or work on, we then create the department, we'll set up a department to reflect the construction of those streets. And at the time we do the budget, being now, not knowing what those streets are, we have to put it, that money, we have to anticipate some amount of money somewhere. So we put it in at first apartment to five hundred. And it's kind of odd because then later, once you identify what those streets are gonna be and you set up the actual department, all the actual, um, expenses are expensed out of a different department cause they expend, these expense amount of the one that you actually set up. So I was thinking about that, makes it a little confusing. I think going forward, maybe we'll just try to do it kind of by year, you know, so that we'll just say, we'll set up the department early and say, okay, for two thousand and eighteen, this is the department we're gonna use and budget it right in there. But anyway, that's, that's another, other issue for another, conversation for another time. But to answer your, to answer your question, if you go down, um, three quarters of the way down, there's a gray bar and it says two thousand and seventeen Ford Road, Turpin, and there was a short stretch we did from Cass Street that went from the bricks to the bridge because the, the college had brought Cass Street up to the bridge on East Side and we thought it was silly to have that little section be old between the bridge and Cass and they were right in there working anyway. So it didn't, they didn't charge us much to do that real short section, so we threw that in as well. So that, and actually, the other thing too, we have not received all the invoices in from that yet, but, um, we anticipate receiving and getting them all in before the end of the year. And that project, we're estimating was about four hundred and two thousand. I think it was like three hundred and seventy for the street work and we put in, we're estimating about another thirty-two thousand for the engineering for the Ford Turpin and that short stretch of Cass. Um, going forward for eighteen, if you go up a little bit, um, to the department five hundred, second gray bar down, I guess. I don't know, we have, nothing's been identified. I don't know exactly what we'll spend. Obviously, we won't know, you know, it's, it's a process of determining what streets you're gonna do and then going out for bid and seeing what the bids come in at.
I, I know in the past, there was a, a cycle, I guess by, by precinct, too?
Yep.
Um, and then the Ford interpreting are, are in five. I know that, I, I know that one has had, uh, improvements. I wanna say, was it, was it Washington a couple of years ago?
Sometimes it'll, it depends on how many years back, um...
But I'm wondering if that's going to, I guess, factor into the, the proposals once we get, you know, from the engineering, uh, firm to kind of...
Yeah, I, cause I think that's how Jim has set it up when, when they've looked at the different area. I mean, I think that's like you said, I think that's what he's doing. He's trying to do it by precinct, but he's, he's targeting different streets that look particularly bad. And my understanding is he tries to rotate it around, you know, the different areas of the city to try to spread it out.
Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, do, does council have, like, some type of input that they can give, like, um?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yep.
I don't know about precinct one, but first, second, third and wild streets.
Councilmember Fr-?
They do help.
Councilmember French?
I think those of us who've been on council for quite a while remember that typically in January, February, we get a list of the top ten and we talk about how much each of those projects. Jim gives us a list of how much each section of street's gonna cost and we take a look at which precincts have been, uh, been done previously and we just negotiate with each other about what we wanna do next, so...
Thank you.
One thing I will point out on, um, for eighteen, you know, again, this is just, we're sticking an amount in there. We don't know what streets or how much or anything like that. But you'll notice the two hundred and forty-three thousand that we put in there is considerably less than what we spent this year. Um, you know, they come up to roughly four oh two. Doesn't mean that we're gonna stick with that or anything, but I think the thought that Jim had in mind was, if I understand him correctly, in nineteen, I believe the MDOT is gonna come in and look at, um, Irwin again. So many times, there's a local match, so even though MDOT will come in and do the street, we have to have money available to meet their match or, you know, whatever their match requirement is. So I think he was hoping maybe to not spend quite as much in eighteen to build up a little bit. So when they do Irwin, in case there is, I mean, hopefully the batch won't be real large, but in case it is, we don't wanna say, uh, sorry, we don't have enough money to match it and lose the grant, so... I think that's what he said.
And I, I know, I know last, last time we talked about Irwin, it was basically half, right? It was half the street, going through, going through the normal major street process, but then there was the grant, um, that we applied to that would have covered, I guess, the entire street. Is it, and, and do we know if that grant is gonna be around?
That ICE grant?
Mm-hmm.
Depends on funding.
Okay. Okay.
Other questions on the street improvement fund? And I'm sure you guys, I'm sure this discussion will come up as we approach. You know, I don't know, obviously, in an ideal scenario, you can start the process early enough to where the engineering can, engineers can get their work done in the winter, get it out for, uh, bids, get them back so that, and, you know, so everything falls into place so when the weather's good, they can start. Um, and, and usually contractors, they've gone all winter without work. If they're hungry for work, they'll usually bid a little better for those jobs that start early in the year. So, uh, this, my guess is this would probably be coming back before too long to try to start narrowing down, you know, where do we wanna go, how much we wanna spend and all that kinda stuff. Other questions on street improvement? Um, flipping over to, um, there's two pages there. So flipping over to the MDOT Street Improvement Fund, which is Fund four fifty-two, that is the fund that we use when MDOT is involved in a project, which, like the case with Superior Street. As you can see, there's nothing budgeted for eighteen because at this point in time, there's no MDOT street repairs anticipated in two thousand and eighteen. So honestly, there, we wouldn't anticipate any activity in this fund. And the way this fund works is when we do have a project going on, we just transfer the money from the prior fund, Fund four fifty, into this fund to cover any match or anything like that. And if you look at the footnote, the bigger gray bar there, it's kinda describes what we're doing in seventeen, it's the exact same thing. We've transferred in some money from sewer fund, or I'm sorry, water fund to help cover the water lines underneath Superior Street out there. Um, transferred in money from the prior, the, uh, street or, Street Improvement Fund four fifty to help cover the match, et cetera, so... And again, nothing, no activity anticipated for next year, so... Any questions on that? Actually, that's it for the funds. Next, one, two, three, four. Next six pages, I guess it is, are the salary and wage positions and salary and wages for eighteen. I know this is something that's been asked for and our apologies for not getting it, not getting it sooner. Um, I don't know if there's questions on that or, I don't think there's been any significant change there other than just reflecting what was negotiated in the recent union contracts. Anything you would like to add, Dr. Bito?
Not in regards to what's there, um, I think the mayor had some questions.
Hmm?
What those were, and then I also wanted to raise the topic.
No, I, I just had one question, cause I, you know, I went back and just compared between it. There was the one difference in the, I guess, the seventeen budget with the assistant manager and then, um, the, the numbers are different between the, I guess, the seventeen budget and then the seventeen represented in the eighteen budget? So I just wanna know what, what accounted for that?
I believe it would be hers as well as the, um, public safety HR coordinator. Um, both of them have started their year in January in those roles and they had their six months evaluation, so that was a step increase associated with, um, those positions. But, um, I'm glad you asked that question because one of the things that we don't have in place is a mechanism for, um, the management level positions to actually get an increase. They receive the, um, the equivalent of the general salary increase that everyone gets, but there isn't anything in place to allow their actual base salary to move. So one of the things I would like you to consider is one of two things, either actually creating, um, steps within their salary range so it's already predetermined what their salary will increase each year or the other alternative would be to keep their salary at the same base but then incorporate a performance-based, um, bonus for them, um, that can be awarded each year. But right now, there isn't anything really, um, clear as to how that happens.
Oh, oh, Councilmember Spicer?
Just other than anything in addition to the cost, the COLA, correct?
Right, okay, gotcha.
Anything else on that one? The next page is just our, again, I think you, you've seen this before in the packet and it just shows for some of these staff, their wages are allocated, um, to different funds depending on, uh, basically just trying to spread out. Uh, they're obviously doing work for other funds, so instead of charging it all to one fund, some of the salary or some of the positions get allocated out and this just shows that allocation. Not any big change there, I don't believe, other than we've done a little bit from last year, which I guess you can't see last year's, but we, we've done a little bit in, with Tiffa and EDC and, uh, which I'm sure next, is it this month, late two month, whatever, when, uh, Amy does her presentations, we, we've changed a little bit of the allocation. Uh, EDC, I think, has picked up a little more, uh, Tiffa's paying a little less. Um, other than that, uh, I mean, there isn't really any significant changes. Um, I think Major and Local Streets picked up a little bit more again in the years past. I mean, sometimes these get set and nobody really looks at them real close. I mean, we just keep plugging along and, and, and years past, Major and Local Streets were really hurting. They couldn't afford to, uh, help out a lot on some of these and now that they're setting a little better, I think we're trying to even it out a little bit between some of the other funds. Um, but other than that, I don't think there's any major changes. Anybody has any questions on that? If not, the last thing we have is the fee schedule. And there are two things highlighted. Um, the first one's mine, I can talk about that. And again, this is proposed, oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, again, these are proposed, uh, if, you know, obviously, um, we would wait to get your approval on any of this before we did it, but the, the first one that I had suggested was, right now, we charge, we get calls from realtors or title companies almost on a daily basis and they want their refinancing properties or dealing with, you know, they're handling clo- uh, they're, they're doing closures for, you know, whether it's someone buying new property, whether it's refinance, whatever the situation is. And they call and they wanna know, you know, if there's any liens on the property. And when they mean any liens, it's not just, you know, is there delinquent taxes? Are there abatement charges? Are there delinquent utility bills? Are there, uh, you know, any other kind? I mean, it's, it's quite, it, it, you know, it's not a terrible burden, but it does take time and, and when they're doing a closing, they usually want the information right now, you know, right away, so... And so we're stopping what we're doing to, you know, look up the taxes, look up. And right now, we charge five dollars a parcel. My recommendation is if we, and, and with the economy starting to turn, we're getting a lot more of this activity. So we're doing, I don't know, I guess I should've gone through and looked to see, but we're doing a lot of these, um, every week, we probably do, I don't know, five, ten a week of... Uh, and sometimes they'll call and they'll ask for the information and then they'll call two weeks later on the same parcel and then they'll call two weeks later again, cause the closings get pushed back or whatever. So I don't know, I thought, hey, baby, we can bump that up and at least help recoup some of our costs for the staff time to look up all this information. But again, if it's something that people don't feel that's justified, um, you know, we'll keep it at five. I don't care, but the only other highlighted one, I think, on page, on page two, was the perpetual care. And again, that was the one that we talked about back when we did the cemetery and cemetery trust, um, budget where we said we were talking about charge, going, we, you know, the city used to charge it. Now we don't, haven't for several years and we're talking about going back to charging that again. Um, and again, I think that's something that we would entertain discussion at some point to determine what we might wanna do. But other than that, I think all the fees have remained the same that I'm aware of. Questions on that?
Councilmember French?
So, um, not that I'm against the Second Amendment, but we're only charging five bucks to license a weapon?
Don't know.
License to purchase a weapon, bottom line. So, just thinking.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, it's a good point. Hope he's here today. I, I don't know what else involved in that, you know, how much...
How much bureaucracy we have to go through, filling out.
Right, um... I'm wondering, I'm wondering, and I could be wrong, but I'm wondering if that maybe, cause I know now, obviously, that someone wants to get, uh, well, you know, I, I, I don't know, to be honest, I can't. But I think it might just be a s- issue of, um, some paperwork that they're filling out, but I don't know. I can't, I can't speak on that for sure.
Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you. Um, Tom, are these, um, the fee schedules, are they regularly reviewed for the time and the, um... Because I, I mean, I know twenty years ago, same fee schedule or, how, how's that done? Do you have any idea?
Uh, I know what you're asking and I'm not entirely certain if I know how to answer. I think as, as things come up at, like, for example, this balance due request that, you know, going from five to ten dollars. I think when there's things that all of a sudden we're getting hit with and it kinda gives you a little bit of a wake up where you think, gosh, we're spending a lot of time doing this and we're not getting paid much for it. Um, a flip side of this is, uh, I'll give you another example. On the other side of the coin, where like bicycle licenses, we used to charge, I don't know if it was a dollar or something. And it just wasn't worth our time to get up to the cash register and take a dollar from these little kids and, yeah, I mean, it's like, we just thought, you know, it, it, it costs us more to go up to cash register and do it than to... And so we just decided to do it free, which I think is a good service that we do. So, I mean, when there are certain things that come up and you deal with them enough, you do start putting some thought into it, but, so I guess in a way, yeah, I think we, you know, it's thing, but a lot of the things on here, you know, we don't deal with a lot, I'll be honest. Um, we had with some of the new construction that come into town, I think it was when O'Reilly's... I think it was when O'Reilly's came, if I recall, they had sent down a, I don't remember, there was some fee that they were paying and we're like, what do we do with this? We've not had new construction since I've been with the city on seventeen, you know. So there's some things you just don't use a lot, you know, so you don't really know what your time or cost is. I don't know if that answered your question.
Somewhat. So I guess basically for the things that we do use on a regular basis, we don't know if we've looked at the last ten, fifty years, see where we are competitive with other cities our size and what the economy dictates. Just a thought.
Yeah, it's a good point. I don't know if we've ever compared with other cities and stuff, but it's a good point, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember French.
So, text message to Scott Kip. It takes all of thirty seconds to do it, which is why it's five bucks.
It's probably a record-keeping thing on our end, probably, yeah.
I do want to remind council, I believe we're going to get a presentation from Lisa Vanderbrink in regards to the SAW grant and that will also have an impact relative to their proposals for this sewer rate. And then we're also waiting to hear back from Mickey Britner in regards to the water rates proposals if we're going to go with the USDA for support of the new water power and that infrastructure. So those will be changing. I don't know if it's being timed for the adoption of this budget, but that will be forthcoming.
We in the wrap-up section?
Pardon me?
We in the wrap-up section.
Yeah, I don't know, that was just, I guess, if there were questions or discussions on.
So, I just have two, I guess, two comments because the manager had an additional budget considerations list. The, one of the questions, one of the things I'd like to do, and we can hopefully talk about this before we finalize the budget, it'd be, I think, a positive, we could make a kind of a habit or a permanent aspect like we did earlier this year, that MML training for members of, I guess, council and the boards and commissions. Because I know that in previous years, you know, we would spend a certain amount of money to send basically one council member to the MML conference in Lansing. And, you know, that person, there was the sole person who had access to, you know, different kinds of training. So I think that doing that every year as a refresher would be something that would be worth doing. And then, yes, Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you.
So, what if you have more than just one that wants to attend?
Yeah, well, basically what we did earlier this year is they, instead of the city sending one individual to an MML conference, basically, we had the MML people come down to us and then we could have, I think, maybe like fifty people or so. So basically, council and then the members of the various city boards. So we could all hear the same thing at the same time. And it primarily focused on just Open Meetings Act and FOIA information and kind of kind of general, kind of board conduct, which is helpful for individuals who have not served on public boards before. So, how much did we spend? Oh, yeah, off the top of my head, I can't remember about.
So, I was like referring to like the convention, the conventions that are held in Lansing. What if more than one person wanted to attend?
We.
Is that negotiable?
We haven't.
That's.
Sent anyone? Councilmember, Councilmember Reed, Councilmember Lawler, yeah.
Mayor Brown. It's for, I called about it. It says for new people, new people who come on the board. And it says, and others if they feel they need it. And it's being offered the twenty-eighth of November. Now, the major convention was held in Holland back in March, I believe it was. September?
August or September.
Yeah, I know there was one in March and in September. But this one is one, and it's, one of them is women in government, which is free. But then there's another one that's for new people who just came onto council.
If I recall correctly, I think, I think how it's set up is they have like a spring conference and like a fall conference. And then maybe the spring conference is the one that travels around the state to, you know, different places. And then the fall one, it may or might be in Lansing, but then what they also do, because in a number of other municipalities, this was an election year. So I know that around election time, they'll have, basically what you were referring to is like, you know, like a training session for newly elected officials. So I know that they have those. I guess what I'm talking about is kind of just a pared-down version of that when they send someone to us so we can get more bang for our buck, basically, because we have a larger group. Because if we sent, you know, the entire, you know, the entire membership of all the boards to these conferences, that would be really expensive, so. So I'm just throwing that out there as a consideration for next year. And then the question I have about, and this is directed towards the attorney, municipal code update. And this may have been in the previous attorney, but I can't remember. But is that, does that fall under the trust? Because I know they can't do operational things, but.
So you're asking whether or not we could deem that to be a capital improvement?
Yeah, because I remember it came up and I cannot remember, and this is, maybe Councilmember French remember, but this was like really early, like maybe.
If I might, it was my understanding that they couldn't do the software. So even when we did the computer upgrades, they did the equipment, the hardware, but they could not do the software. And I think this would fall into the software category.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and that, incidentally, has not been updated since June of 2012.
Yeah. And that segues very nicely into charter. That was actually, that would actually be something that if, if, if the citizens, if the council agreed and the citizens agreed, that'd be another possible improvement to the charter to actually have a set maximum date for those updates. Because I don't think we have anything where there's like a number of years after which you have to have the ordinances updated, consolidated, whatever. But I did talk to the gentleman who spoke, Mr. Lettsman, after that about, I guess, price, the associated fees around the charter revision. He said that usually they split it across to, yes.
This is not discussion of charter amendments, not on the agenda this evening.
Yeah, but I'm discussing the cost right now, so.
But that's not for this year's, that hasn't been approved, that's not.
But I'm discussing it because it's a budget consideration, yeah. It's something that we can include the budget, the budget hasn't been finalized yet. So the point I'm making is that he said that usually municipalities will split that cost between two budgets because the length of that process crosses two budgets, so. Yeah, I just wanted to throw that out there. And he did agree with what you said, which is that it wouldn't have to be in this budget, it could be the next budget because it would, you know, it wouldn't start until after the voters had said yea or nay, so. That's my comments, so any other comments?
Would you like me to address the other additional budget considerations at all?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor and council, what I gave you on your desk is some additional things to consider relative to this budget and going forward. And I want to point out, if you recall, we did the capital improvements plan. And that's, that was the one-page sheet and it shows a number of items, all of which are quite costly. But those were things that you had identified as being priorities for this coming fiscal year. And from the majority of them currently, that funding is not in place. I do believe we put in a police vehicle for a rotation for a new vehicle. But the majority of the other ones are not currently included in the budget that you're considering. Also, I included a copy of your goals that you identified for this year as well as next year. And some of those have implications both financially as well as staff resources. And starting at the bottom of just the one-page highlight that I gave you in terms of staff support, I think it's fair to say that between my office and the clerk and the finance department in particular, all of our departments, you're already aware of code enforcement and there's a special meeting scheduled for Thursday to talk about that. All of us are really maxed out. And next year is going to be an election year. And one of the things that you are doing, which I think is great that you're having so many additional meetings, but we're going to need someone to cover the meetings because Jill's going to be busy. And another thing to keep in mind is she doesn't have backup. So one of the, it's worth considering having at least a part-time person or someone who can assist her and her operations in general, and I don't think I see her shaking her head at all. So that's one of the needs. The city manager's office is phenomenally busy. And Stacy does a tremendous job and she's helping with a number of projects and special activities. But we, both of us are at meetings a good portion of the day. And we really need someone in the office to just cover the phones, at least for a portion of the day. So if there could be staff support there. And Tom usually about twice a year sends me about a four-page memo letting me know that he needs additional support in the finance department. So if we're going to be looking at increasing our capacity, we really need to start looking at how can we seriously take a look at what is the staffing needs in order to accomplish that. And we're fortunate that there are so many projects and programs and activities going on. But we also have to keep in mind that we're operating at fifty percent of the staffing levels of ten years ago. And we've done a lot with very little, but we are, we're busting at the seams, literally. And I feel bad because I don't get a chance to even return phone calls in a timely manner, let alone even want to tell you how many unopened emails I have. And it's a good portion of our time is just putting out fires. What is, you know, the most pressing thing that's happening right now? So we don't have the time to be strategic thinkers in terms of a number of things because we're so tied up with so many very pressing matters. So I hope that we can have a conversation around how can we increase capacity. We've done a tremendous job in partnerships in terms of the Miracor Vista volunteers, student internships, working with the colleges. But they're not the same as having dedicated staff. And they're typically don't have scheduled hours. So, you know, we can work with them on specific projects, but that's not necessarily helping us with our day-to-day operations. So we really need to start taking a very close look at what can we do to increase the capacity before all of us start keeling over, literally, from the stress and strain that we're experiencing. Then also, the Albion Marshall Connector, there is a meeting tomorrow with the planning group. Came about at your request to look at sustainable funding. At least we're probably looking at a three-year span of time until the regional initiative for transit system can go forward in terms of asking for, asking the voters to support a regional transit system. And that study is already underway. The cemetery, as Finance Director Tom Mead had mentioned, will be bringing forth an ordinance relative to the perpetual care of the cemetery. It's a beautiful place and it does need attention. And it's truly one of our treasures, it's historic in nature. So we're looking at grant funding as well, but we need to put in the perpetual care mechanism in place so that we can support that. And additional staff is needed. One staff person full-time is not sufficient to adequately take care of that asset.
I have one question. So on the capital improvement plans, the roof or the replacement?
The cemetery.
Yeah, is that something that the, I guess, I'm sure the FB is fund balance? Is that something that that could, could that, could we afford to do the fund balance on that?
With the cemetery?
With the roof on the, replace the roof of the cemetery office?
Are you talking the general fund balance?
Or no, from the, from the cemetery trust, I guess.
I don't have the trust, cemetery trust balance.
I know we went over that, but I can't remember.
Off the top of my head, I can't remember where the, exactly what level the fund balance is at in the cemetery trust. Although I do know we are currently and have for the last several years take out fifteen to twenty. I mean, it started at fifteen, then it went to seventeen, now I think we're up to twenty thousand a year that we're transferring out of the perpetual care fund, cemetery trust fund to help with the ongoing maintenance of the cemetery with no revenue coming in. So that fund is dropping pretty quick. And if I recall, don't hold me to the numbers, but it seemed like it was down around a hundred thousand, ninety thousand, somewhere in that area, because I know, I was thinking, there's not too many more years where we're going to be able to take that twenty thousand dollar hit out of there, so.
Thank you.
Okay, and as you had mentioned, the municipal code update, we were asked for some quotes in regards to that. We haven't received those yet. The planning commission is part of the redevelopment-ready community. If you recall, we did receive the grant match from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for the zoning consultant. And they are allowing us, I think, a sixteen thousand in kind as a match, but they are asking for some actual cash match from the city, so that's four thousand. And that would probably need to be in the planning commission's budget line item since they've really been the point entity relative to the redevelopment-ready initiatives. The charter revision, as the mayor had mentioned, the consultant had indicated that his starting rate was about thirty thousand. There are other costs, including the elections. So that could be three to four elections. The per diem for the nine charter commissioners, and even if you're looking at twenty to twenty-five dollars per person per meeting, it indicated they would meet probably once a week. That's about nine hundred dollars a month for two to three years. There's, usually from what I've seen in Detroit and Pontiac, there's a need for additional support staff because typically the clerk is not available to support another weekly meeting. So there would need to be staff support relative to the keeping of their minutes and all the other administrative things that go along with that. And I know I've been asked to consult on a number of their initiatives because there's just a baseline understanding that newly elected citizens who have no experience in government need to just be brought up to have a clear understanding of what is the role of government before you start trying to initiate those changes. So those tend to be costs, along with the cop agent and everything else that you need to take into consideration. And the one that's not on my list, because I was expecting Councilmember Sonia Brown to be here, was relative to the Dalrymple property, anticipating that that will transfer over to the city in the next coming months. So there presumably will be some additional cost relative to that maintenance.
Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we anticipate a date for, to have a discussion for staff support?
We can schedule a work session. Yeah, I guess I'll commend the council because this is probably one of the hardest working council in a while, we've had so many meetings. But yeah, so we can, I'm sure we can do that. I think the question would be just.
When are you going to do it?
Well, not when, but just giving the manager time to, you know, so.
It's the thirteen.
Councilmember Spicer.
Has to be read. Has to be read.
I'd like to, um, find out while we're discussing budget, and if clear has been, or do we have any idea, and there will be a, um, information with regard to the, is it regar, regar?
Oh, okay.
Do we have any info on that?
I don't know if Jim Linderson included that in his, one of his budgets.
He did not.
Okay.
At least it wasn't identified as such.
So, we'll have to check with him to make certain that wasn't overlooked.
Thank you.
Thanks for the reminder.
Are there any, so, just to jump back, uh, we will, uh, Councilmember Lawler, well, we'll see if we can do the squeeze of it, um, are there any other comments this evening on the budget? Okay, uh, we'll move on to public comment, persons addressing the council should limit their comments to no more than three minutes, we ask that you observe proper decorum, are there any, uh, public comments this evening, please state your name and address?
Mark Lele, four twenty-two Elizabeth Street in Albion, at a recent city council meeting, and again tonight, there has been mention of the desire for a major charter revision, this is very concerning to me, because a revision of this magnitude is at best a distraction from more important challenges facing our community. Albion needs new investment, more jobs, better streets, modern infrastructure, adequate housing, and a strong economy shared by all, not one of these things, not one of these benefits can be brought about by a change in the city charter, what can bring about these benefits is demonstrating as a community that we have our act together, where charter revisions have been needed in the past, and they have been relatively modest, the citizens of Albion have had the opportunity to make them at the ballot box using regular elections, there's been no need for external consultants and outside legal counsel, and no need to go to the expense of scheduling special elections, while one can argue that it's most efficient to tackle the entire charter at once, the core concern remains that there are far more important and pressing issues for Albion City Council, city staff, and the people of Albion to tackle, regardless of who pays for it, the major expense that would come with a revision of this magnitude, or what budget line item you take it from, it is in the end not worth the cost, I hope that city council does not go down the road of a major charter revision, because there are more serious issues and opportunities that demand our attention, but if it does, I will vigorously participate in a community campaign to oppose it, we are at a crossroads in this community, and we do not need and cannot afford yet more diversion and distraction from our very real challenges.
Good evening, John Face, eight twelve North Eaton Street, Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, get ready to hear me over and over and over again, because I will haunt you for all the rest of your meetings, opening our charter is a dangerous endeavor that you seek, dangerous, as the gentleman right before me stated, changes have been made easily by the action of our council and our voters, opening up was equivalent to our constitution is not only not needed, but can fundamentally change our city for decades to come, our charter currently exists in a way that any issue, no matter how minor it may be, is already covered by it, and issues such as we had just a year ago with the city clerk's office was easily remedied, which, I'll be totally honest, was shocked that it took us that long to change that problem, but opening our charter is dangerous, I beg you to stop this talk now, and say, no, we're not going to put it on the ballot next year, no, we're not even consider it, because if you even try to do this, I will make sure the citizens of Albion know what's happening without them having any direct input, because this isn't your charter, it's mine, it's his, and it's his, you affect us all by taking a dangerous step and opening our entire charter to change, thank you.
Hi, it's great in the big city, hi, my name's John Dunklin, I live at twelve oh three Second Street, the main reason why I'm here today, I own a house on four oh two Mechanic Street, city of Albion is supposed to clean up debris, you guys have made us have some type of garbage service that the debris is not cleaned up, we all pay for a street cleaner, the street cleaner has disappeared after the garbage services came along, that means the city is still out of code, and they're still making codes for we the people, we the people have to stay in code, I ask again, do Albion have to stay in code? I guess there's no answer, but that's sad that you can sit up here, months and months and months go by, and then you can still sit here and not have anything, basically, for the people that pay all of you, why are you here? If we pay you, you're supposed to give us something, I don't know what you're giving us for our tax money, but as far as I'm concerned, it's nothing, and I thank you for your time. Yes?
What's, what's the address of the Mechanic House?
Four oh two Mechanic.
Okay.
They tilted the street, so it goes, all the debris goes straight in my basement, it goes straight in my garage, and it's been like this for ten years.
Are there any other, uh, public comments this evening? Give, Councilmember Spicer?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Posed, thank you, this means adjourn.